Excellent. Well, good morning to all. And this is bittersweet as it is my last press conference as the Montgomery County Council President in the year 2014. Notice I made that very specific. But no, it has been a phenomenal year. I want to thank each and every one of you for continuing to report out the news, the happenings that are happening here in Montgomery County and specifically with our county council. I really do appreciate all of you taking the time to be here and learn and ask questions, ask sometimes the tough questions about what it is that we're doing, what it is that we're thinking, how we're planning on moving forward. It is so important to our residents that they hear about what's going on in local government. It's something that I feel extremely passionate about, so I want to thank all of you for doing that throughout this year. It's really important to me. I did want to start off by talking about our elections. Many of you know that if you haven't heard, we do have a Republican incoming governor. And so I've been asked a lot about what that might mean for us. And, you know, I've done some reflecting. I've also had a chance to reach out to some folks that are part of Governor-elect Hogan's transition team. And I've talked to them specifically about some of the priorities and concerns of Montgomery County. I also had a chance to talk to the county executive before he left for his trip to India, who did also have a conversation with Governor-elect Hogan as well. And so I think that again, what remains true is that Montgomery County is the largest county in the state of Maryland. We are the economic engine as well as the education engine of the state. And accordingly, our expectation is that we'll continue to receive support that allows us to keep doing the great things that happen here in Montgomery County. Everyone knows that different people have different ways in which they try and attack problems. And so I certainly understand and appreciate that we might look at different methodology in which we try and address a lot of the concerns or challenges that befall not only Montgomery County but the state of Maryland as a whole. But I remain committed that any elected official would certainly understand that Montgomery County should always be a priority, not just based on its size, but also the fact that we have great innovation as well as a phenomenal education system here. And those things need to be protected. Obviously, transportation has always been a priority, and I know that Governor-elect Hogan has talked about a number of road projects that he certainly would like to prioritize. I would highlight that one of the key projects that this council has put at the top of our priority list when it comes to roads is the widening of I-270 to have H-O-T lanes, very similar to what's seen in Northern Virginia. I think that would be a great win for this incoming governor to be able to keep pace with what we're seeing happening in Northern Virginia and also alleviate one of our major choke points in the state when it comes to interstate traffic. And so from that perspective, there are a number of things that I think that this governor can continue to support Montgomery County on while still holding true to his campaign promises. And so we look forward to working with him and coming up with ways in which we can do just that. When it comes to the other elections throughout Montgomery County, I think that we have already had a chance to sit down and meet with a myriad of our new delegates and senators. I have had a chance to sit down and talk with them in detail, and we'll continue to do that, laying out our priorities for the upcoming year. Many of you know that I testified on behalf of the council a few days ago before our state delegation about some of our priorities that of course aren't anything different from what they've always been. Focusing on education, making sure that we continue to have our world-class education system, focusing on transportation priorities, both mass transit as well as roads, whether it's the CCT or Purple Line, making sure that we're continuing to move forward with exploring the options associated with BRT. Also, making sure that our road infrastructure remains intact and that we continue to expand and connect many of our neighborhoods that have been isolated. So from that perspective, those things continue. We also are very conscious and aware of the concerns regarding health and human services and making sure that when it comes to some of those programs that are out there for some of our most vulnerable, we need to make sure that we're highlighting those for everybody and how important they are to our community. Certainly, while we remain one of the more affluent counties, not only in the state but in the region, but we also have, and I want to remind people as we approach Thanksgiving, a very large homeless population as well as folks that are just trying to make ends meet. And so from that perspective, we will need our state to continue to be a partner to make sure that we're providing those services for many of our residents. I want to talk a little bit about school bus cameras. Many of you saw that our school bus camera request that we had sent to our chief judge came back saying that they did not believe that they should ask for the maximum fine. We will therefore be asking for legislation to be sponsored. I've already talked to a number of delegates about sponsoring legislation in both the House and Senate that will increase the fine for school bus cameras from $250 to $500. That then will give the courts the flexibility, I think, necessary so that if indeed they do want to assume their half approach when it comes to fines, that they'll be able to continue to do that. I've stressed to you over the course of this year how important this is. It's very interesting that even amongst many of you as media outlets, you've seen it yourself in your own personal situations. As I talk to folks all the time, members of our community, they give me their own personal anecdotes. Just the other day, I was talking to a person who said she saw a bus get stopped, a stop school bus get stopped twice by two cars. And she literally wanted to go and chase after the drivers, just as I had told the story about I had done. This continues to be a problem. It continues to be rampant. And I think that until we have a fine that certainly shows how egregious of a violation this is, we'll continue to see those problems escalate. And so I'm very hopeful that our state will act and move forward with increasing these fines so that it can help us alleviate this challenge that we're facing. Last but not least, I wanted to talk a little bit about our minimum wage. Many of you know I have a piece of legislation in that actually aligns the dates for our minimum wage with the state's active dates as well. There's also been some conversation about cleaning up some of the language regarding some of our tipped employees as well. There is no legislation for that piece just yet, but that's something that we're, I think, a number of folks on the council are certainly willing to look at. What we basically want to do is make sure that we don't lose ground when it comes to minimum wage, but also make sure that it's coordinated to protect many of our businesses, especially our small businesses, that really still don't have a grasp on what exactly they're supposed to do or what this means. Our Department of Licensing, our Labor and Licensing and Regulation Department has actually done a good job of trying to reach out to a lot of our businesses to make sure that they understand their responsibilities. However, there's still a little bit of confusion when it comes to businesses that hold multiple jurisdiction, presence as well as have employees that work inter-jurisdictional as well. And so from that perspective, we really want to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, maintaining the integrity of the minimum wage bill, but at the same time, making sure that it's flexible enough to allow our businesses to do what they need to do to operate efficiently. I want to close by again thanking each and every one of you. This has been an amazing year, and you'll hear me talk about it a little bit more on the last day when I passed the gavel. But what a remarkable experience in being able to learn so much more about what we do in the role of council president. And, you know, it's really been eye-opening as I got a chance to go throughout the county and represent this council, talking to communities that I necessarily hadn't talked to before, which gave me a great insight into what's most important here in Montgomery County. And I think that for us, it truly is about making sure that we give people the opportunity to make sure that they can do whatever it is that they want to do, that they can live their life and enjoy the great things that Montgomery County has to offer, and make sure that they're accessible to everyone regardless of which corner of the county you live in. And so with that, I want to remind people that November is Men's Health Month. I myself, you know, unfortunately had to cancel my last press conference because I didn't get my flu shot and also succumbed to some other things as well. So just make sure that you get your checkups, make sure that if you feel sick that you go see a doctor. It really is important. And it is important to get regular checkups. Unfortunately, many men throughout this nation, not just in this county, think that they're men, and so they don't need to go see a doctor. Let me tell you, suffering through 102.6 degree fever for two days, there's nothing greater than having a doctor be able to help you and get you right. So just wanted to remind everybody to make sure you get your annual checkups and make sure that you're screened and you go see your doctor. All right? With that, I'll open it up for questions.
Regarding the school bus cameras, the judge said people weren't being fined full amount. Was that what I guess the complaints were being filed for? Did you have the sign on those numbers?
Correct. The fine that was being assigned was the $125. We didn't think that that was significant enough and asked the courts if they could just assign people the $250 fine. The courts felt as though because that was the maximum fine, that that would actually detract from people actually paying the fine and more people coming into court. You know, my take is is that a person who actually has to stand before a judge and explain why it is that they passed a stop school bus might actually be something that might change their behavior. So I don't know if necessarily that was a bad thing. But that being said, we certainly know that there are two things that are factors, people losing time or people losing money. And so certainly if we can't address the time aspect of guaranteeing that they're going to be before a judge, what we certainly can do is increase the fine to make sure that it hits their wallets and they understand how serious this crime is.
And again, when you mentioned the half though, explain that once again.
Sure. Typically, typically what our court systems do is they assign the penalty at half of what the maximum penalty is. That's to encourage a lot of people to pay the fine versus coming into the court system. So I understand why the judge said that, the chief judge said that he would prefer that they keep it at the half because then they'd see an influx of people potentially coming into court. But that being said, I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing. And so from that perspective, maybe that's the right mechanism for us to have so that they would have to explain in front of a judge and many of their peers sitting and waiting why it was they felt it was so important to pass a school bus with their stop arm extended. You know, but either way, I think whether it's via time of them taking off and coming into court and having to be before a judge or increasing the fine to such a large amount that it is discouraging to people, where people do take that pause and say, wait a minute, am I going to actually get a $250 ticket instead of the 125 and therefore decide not to do this any longer? So I think that, you know, either one would work in our favor. So I'm definitely going to be pushing for us to make sure that we increase the fine to 500, which would assume that our local court system would then assign the penalty at the $250 mark.
Did you receive the letter from the legislature last week about the possibility of major cuts? Can you tell us about that?
Well, I haven't had a chance to talk to the county executive himself directly. The letter was, that came from the county executive was signed by the CAO. I do want to delve in a little bit deeper and understand a little bit more about what some of the numbers are that lead to where we are, but also understand in terms of our kind of future outlook as well as future planning, what that's going to mean for us. To simply say, well, I mean, I need you guys to exert some caution certainly doesn't give me the same comfort level as it would if we had some more specific answers regarding what that impact might be on us and our spending ability. And so from that perspective, there's still a number of things that are out there that are floating. We still have our liability when it comes to the win case that was recently heard in the Supreme Court. And so that has a price tag of almost $100 million, which of course would make a significant difference in terms of our flexibility when it comes to our budget for next year. So there are a number of moving pieces that are still out there. Once the county executive returns, I'll be sitting down and talking with him in more detail, not as council president, but as an individual council member to understand a little bit more about what it is that's entailed. But at this point, this was a complete surprise to us. The council was not aware of any of the shortfall concerns that were addressed in the memo. And so we're trying to garner more information before we have a true reaction at this point.
A couple of the school issues that have been percolating lately on the handling of sexual assaults and the lack of transparency particularly in schools in your district, and also the Eid decision. The Muslim community, Sakeh Ali, was among those who said, great, now we look like the guys who took away your Christmas and your Yom Kippur and your Rosh Hashanah. Can you talk about those two things?
Sure. Well, let me just say that transparency and communication is key when it comes to our school system. And when it comes to incidents that happen in our schools, I've always tried to impart on my school leaders that the more information that you could possibly give to parents, the better. I unfortunately have seen incidents that have happened at schools that are in my district, but the principals handled them appropriately in reaching out to the parents. And in those instances, those issues were addressed and there never was the need for follow-up or concern. In this instance, I do feel as though these should have been communicated to the parents immediately, to the entire school body regardless of whether it may have been an isolated incident, understanding that there may have been other victims. And now we see that that's been the case, but that's the reason why we do these things, to make sure, but also to give our parents an opportunity to have conversations with their children, to make sure and identify if there are other potential problems that exist at the school. And so I'm happy to see that now there's a new directive that's been assigned to all of our principals and administrators that specifically says just that, that we need to communicate, that we need to be very open and transparent when it comes to incidents like this that are happening in our schools. The reality is, is that the school system has a very large employee body, and we can't control every single one of our employees. That's the unfortunate reality. We are all individual human beings, and regardless of what background checks, you never know what that means somebody's going to do tomorrow. That being said, what we can do is address it, act swiftly, make sure that we're protecting our children once we find out that there is an incident, and make sure that we communicate that information. And so I think that's the direction that we need to head in. I think that that's where now the school system and the superintendent has said that the new training that's for our principals and leaders in our schools will entail. And so therefore, from that perspective, I remain confident that moving forward, we hopefully won't have any other incidents like this again.
And then on you?
When it comes to the holiday decision, you know, this is certainly something that's open to our school board. There are a number of ways in which this decision could have been addressed. I'm not going to impart my own personal opinion on whether or not I agree with the decision, but certainly understand the explanation that the decision that was made by the Montgomery County School Board is similar to other surrounding jurisdictions in terms of the decisions that they made to remove religious indications from the calendar as a whole. And so that's one direction that we could have gone in, and that's the direction that the school system decided to take up, so.
Craig, back to your school bus cameras. What support do you have among our delegation for raising that? And are you seeking a bill that would just raise it among Montgomery County? Are we talking statewide, the cap on these fees?
Well, that's actually a great question and one in which I've actually had a conversation with a number of other stakeholders from around the state about some of the things that they're doing, specifically in Frederick County, that was one of the first ones to roll out the program as well as Prince George's. So we are talking about whether or not statewide, we want to make sure that this is stamped out. I think that again, with other jurisdictions that see it and aren't seeing the prevalence of the number of tickets or citations that are being issued, it becomes less of an importance factor for them. But I do chair the Maryland Association of Counties Education Committee, and so it will be something that I will be taking up at one of our first work sessions to talk about whether or not indeed we do want to push for a statewide bill. But I have talked to Sheila Hickson, who's, you know, Chairwoman of Ways and Means, also Delegate Ann Kaiser, who's the Chair of the Education Committee, to talk a little bit about this and talk about what we might see in terms of who might sponsor the bill. But I do think overall that we do have generic public support around the bill, but specifically we haven't had a bill sponsor as of yet, but I think that will happen relatively shortly.
Recently, there was a videotape, I don't know if I did it, from the council election that came today telling basically the school board, Dr. Sauer, please stop running around and saying that we're not getting the return on the dollar that we should from Annapolis, that it doesn't help their case. You've been in Annapolis in the past? You know how that goes? What's your response to that? I mean, is that a problem? Is it an issue when we say we're not getting the bank for the buck?
Well, I think no one wants to hear someone say that they're not doing a good job securing resources for their community. And so I think that it has to be measured in terms of the dialogue, but I think that the fact remains that while our delegation continues to fight for us, the numbers are the numbers. And the reality is, is that for at least a decade now, Montgomery County has not received the funding that it needs to keep pace with the growth that we're seeing within our school system when it comes to school construction. That's just a fact. Now again, that doesn't mean that it's because our delegation wasn't working hard or trying to strike deals that would garner us that support. The reality is, is that at the end of the day, it's the Board of Public Works that makes these kinds of decisions when it comes to school construction. So our comptroller, our treasurer, our governor that are sitting there are the ones that are making these decisions. Now again, when you talk about the overall budget, the reality is, is that it starts with the governor. And so I've had very open and frank conversations about Governor O'Malley and whether or not he was adequately supporting our system. At the same time, it's not badmouthing him, but it's saying the facts are the facts. And I think that it needs to be important, the important piece is it needs to be out there. It needs to be a part of the conversation because the second that we start to take away the fact that we're not getting what we need, folks will assume we're getting what we need. The old adage, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, is a reality. It really is. And so we have to operate under that auspice and keep reminding people that we really do need this school construction money just to keep pace, not even to get ahead. This is just to keep pace with the exponential growth that we're seeing only here in Montgomery County.
Do you think you'll do better under a Hogan administration?
You know, that's a question that still remains to be seen until I've had a chance to talk to the governor directly and have some more informed discussions about what the lay of the land is. I mean, as we are looking at a potential deficit, so is the state. And so from that perspective, we certainly want to make sure that we're taking all that into account when it comes to our impending budget. And so from that perspective, we have to temper expectations, understanding that we don't print money like the federal government. The state has to pass a balanced budget just as we do, and so we understand it. We get that. But at the same time, we also do need to make sure that folks understand that we do have needs that continue to not be met up to this point.
Craig, Snowdon Farm Parkway, I understand you're looking to take that last section of land. Kind of tell me the reasoning here of why the county is taking this by eminent domain and whether or not you've heard from the property owner.
I actually haven't heard about that particular discussion, but I know that a lot of times when the initial discussions were going on, typically when they do break down, that's the end result that happens because this is an imperative county need. Snowdon Farm Parkway, as you know, for many folks in the Clarksburg area are very concerned about completing that, and it has economic development implications as well as public safety implications. And so from that perspective, you know, while it's unfortunate that sometimes we have to make those decisions as local government, we always weigh those types of decisions about trying to figure out what we can do best. But a lot of times, it boils down to if those discussions and we can't get to that common ground number that's going to work for the property owner as well as work for the taxpayers, then we have to take that next step.
And is this pretty critical to, I mean, Clarksburg Village has remained kind of stagnant in its development for quite some time. And I understand this is a condition on the development to finish this. I mean, are we hoping that if we finish Snowdon Farm Parkway, Clarksburg Village will?
Well, I think they all go hand in hand. Look, you know, what we've tried to do with Clarksburg is make sure that we're completing all of those loose ends. And so when it comes to Snowdon, when it comes to Clarksburg Village, when it comes to Clarksburg Town Center, all of those pieces are extremely important. And all of those matter to the true build-out and success of Clarksburg as a whole. And so, you know, we are looking at, and you'll see us when we take up Stringtown Road at the beginning of the year. We're continuing to press forward very quickly in being able to do everything that we can to really truly put the finishing touches on Clarksburg and allow Clarksburg to heal and move forward.
Another community you represent, Montgomery Village, the golf club I understand is closing on the border area. How historic is that and what's it meant for the future of Montgomery Village?
Well, it's certainly sad when you see anything that has such a historic presence and means so much to so many people to go. It's always one of those that is an uncomfortable situation, but oftentimes change is uncomfortable. And Montgomery Village is changing. Montgomery Village, I see in the future as a vibrant, thriving community that has both garden apartments and homes that continue to exist from our previous stock coupled together with new transit-oriented development style housing. It's not going to be that TOD hub because we don't have anything like a BRT stop or something that would give it that rise in terms of density, but it's again, that new way of thinking in terms of design, whether it's some of the design-for-life aspects that we're looking at incorporating that we passed as a council, really working with some of our folks that are either disabled or some of our aging population to come up with new innovative ways. You know, the reality is, is that the housing stock in Montgomery Village, oftentimes some of it's 30, 40 years old. You know, my mother, who was just talking about her town home the other day that has to go up three flights of steps, those things aren't conducive anymore, but that was the old style of development. We can change. We can start developing houses differently to meet the needs of our growing senior population and some of our population returning veterans that need to have a different style. And so I think that incorporating all those things together, Montgomery Village is a great place to do just that, to focus on those kinds of aspects. And also again, having that new development will also spur some economic development, some of that economic growth that's so important when it comes to rebuilding the town center itself and really getting a grocery store back in Montgomery Village. Those are the things that we continue to hear from our residents. All those things are coupled together. And so, you know, while again, it's tough to see a nice thing like the golf course go, the cusp in what we tend to have on the horizon is looking bright as well for the future of Montgomery Village, so I'm excited about that as well.
I had another question with Mary and Mary passed away yesterday. Did you know when? What was your reaction to the news?
I did. I actually had a chance to talk to the mayor a number of times, and it was actually on the Kojum Namdi Show was the last time that I saw him and got a chance to talk to him. You know, it's interesting. I had made some comments on my Twitter page because it's unfortunate that often I had made some comments on my Twitter page because it's unfortunate that oftentimes in elected office, elected officials are framed by some of the mistakes that they've made. When you look at the years and years of dedicated service that this man had to his community, not only from elected office, but also in the civil rights movement, those things don't go away because he made some bad decisions and made some mistakes. And so I think that especially in death, we want to reflect on the positivity that people have brought to our communities. And Mayor Marion Barry did just that. He really fought to make sure that people in the District of Columbia had a voice, something that I try and do each and every day, making sure that my folks in the Up County have a voice. You know, and it really is something that is sad and hopeful at the same time that someone will pick up where Mayor Marion Barry left off when it came to his community engagement and involvement. It's something that I mentioned quite a bit this year in terms of who's most important, really focusing on the community, what their needs and wants are and trying to address them. And I think that he certainly did that through his summer work program who many notables, including Resheren Baker, our county executive from Prince George's, went through. I mean, he's touched so many lives and, you know, if I could certainly reflect on my future one day and have people say the same thing about me, boy, would I be blessed.
Can I ask you to follow up a little bit because you mentioned Resheren Baker and you look at the two most populous counties in Maryland now, led by county executives who happen to be African-American. Barry was often fond of saying that, you know, he presented strong black leadership and that made people uncomfortable. Did you agree with that?
Absolutely. Look, and the funny part is, is that people oftentimes want to, in this day and age, shy away from talking about race, right? They want to make race a non-factor when the reality is, is that diversity matters. Diversity helps us because we still look at things in different ways. And so it's great to have that diversity that's there. It's great to have a myriad of different aspects of how we look at things, both gender, background, racial diversity, all of those things, you know. For folks who continue to push for and say, you know, wouldn't it be great to have a female president? Well, is there a distinct difference between men and women when it comes to governing? So if there is, and if you believe that there is, is there a distinct difference in governing when it comes to some that might be, you know, of different racial backgrounds or ethnicities? I think that overall, look, having as many eyes as you can have looking at things, but also having a various amount of experiences are so important. It's what's guided me in my life, having the multiple experiences of my mother who grew up in rural South Carolina as the granddaughter of a mother who had a sixth grade education and a father who had a third grade education. That diversity of understanding coupled with me growing up as basically a silver spoon child in Montgomery County and wealthy jurisdiction of Layhill Village, but I never forgot about those other experiences and that experiential learning that went on. And so I think that, again, you couple all those things together and it certainly does matter and make a difference. So I think that, you know, as we talk about Montgomery County, we talk about our diversity as our strength, there's no reason why we shouldn't say that as, that also translates into our leaders as well.
Craig, tomorrow morning, talking about the state legislative program, can you give us a preview of what you're going to be addressing in that?
Let's see here. So with state ledge, it's really about strategy for next year. Obviously, we're going to talk about the priorities that we laid out for the state delegation, focusing on transportation, focusing on public school construction, focusing on a number of different bond projects we have, which include Montgomery College as well as some road projects as well, making sure that those stay on track. It's really going to be, and I think this one is preliminary, just to make sure that there aren't other agenda items that are out there. Obviously, I myself personally will have our school bus camera bill that we'll talk about and discuss, but other colleagues that might have things that they want to focus on as well for this upcoming impending session. And then after that, the real state ledge begins after we've seen the governor really start to take shape in terms of who his assignments are for his cabinet, what his first conversations are about budget, and then from there, we'll be able to make some even more informed and better strategy decisions at that point.
You mentioned strategy. I mean, these are obviously priorities Montgomery County has gone to the state with before. In your opinion, is it time to look at this differently? I mean, because if it hasn't worked in the past, do we take the same approach in the future?
That's a great question, but the reality is, is that the players have changed. And so while the conversation might be the same, the players have certainly changed and it's all about how you frame things that make it work or not work for people in terms of their investment. And so from that perspective, it certainly is one in which if we could frame it in a way, while we might, let's just say, for example, for argument's sake, let's just say that Purple Lion wasn't the top priority for Governor-elect Hogan. We can still talk about a myriad of road projects that are extremely important to Montgomery County and focus on those, and so that becomes our strategy when it comes to public school construction. If he's not going to be focused there, but he's going to be focused on higher ed, we have a myriad of needs with both USG and Montgomery College that we can stress and tying those into the business sector and the great growth that we've seen in both cybersecurity and biotech here in Montgomery County. So there are a number of different ways in which we can reframe the conversation and I think that we'll probably have to do some of that. But at the same time, I think that remaining true to the core principles of what matters to Montgomery County will stay the same. And I think that, again, with different leadership, there represents different opportunities for us to move forward.
Lastly, again, I know on the education piece, when we talk about the return on the dollar, I've seen and heard 18 cents, 19 cents. Is that accurate? Are those figures where we are?
They are and they're all relative. I mean, you know, it depends on how you look at the money that's coming back, how much money Montgomery County continues to invest in a lot of these programs versus what the state's support is. Look, at the end of the day for us, what needs to happen is I think that as we continue to grow as a county, we need to see the numbers in terms of support continue to grow from the state. I think that would be a success for us and a continued win. What we don't want to do is remain stagnant. What we don't want to do is see us go backwards in terms of what we've seen in the state and partnering with us. We've seen some times under this current governor and this current administration where we've gone backwards. The shift of teacher pensions to all counties in the state of Maryland was a tremendous blow to all of our economies and that happened under a Democratic governor. So, you know, there's a lot of things that are out there that we continue to play defense on every single day, regardless of who's in office. But the reality is, is that I think that it's imperative for us to make the point that Montgomery County, being the largest jurisdiction, but also the economic engine of the state of Maryland matters, and Governor-elect Hogan focusing on the economy, focusing on jobs, focusing on business, it would behoove him to make sure that he invested in a place where all of those things are being done, and that's right here in Montgomery County.
Have you ever put a dollar figure on it? I mean, she mentioned the 19.22 cents. What does Montgomery County need? How many cents per dollar do we need?
We need way more than what's feasibly possible in a budget. And I've been in the state delegation, so I know we've talked about what that number might be. The reality is, it couldn't be achievable with the current responsibilities that the state has right now. That's why I continue to say that for us, because what the danger is oftentimes when you actually pick a number, it actually paints you in a corner. What we need to continue to push and strive for is that if there are particular projects that they need to support those, and then beyond that, we're looking for substantial increases to at least meet the needs of our residents. And so that's the message that we've always continued to push forward. It's something that's easily defensible beyond just picking a number and saying, this is what you should be. It's about what our community needs and we need to remain competitive. We need to remain the leader of the state.
What are you going to miss about being council president? What advice do you have for Mr. Leventhal?
So the thing that I'm going to miss most about being council president is these great meetings. And I'm actually quite serious. This is a great opportunity to get people to understand what it is that we do. I care so much about our responsibility as a local elected leader and what we're trying to accomplish, and you're getting the message out to people and letting them know about the things that are going on here matters so much to the efficacy of all of us as council members. So it's my hope that Councilmember Leventhal will continue in the same fashion that I have of holding these meetings regularly so that people can gain another window. I know that MCM does a great job through their coverage on a daily basis of our meetings and broadcasting those, and that's terrific, but also about the hot button topics and the more outlets that we can get that to, the more people that we can get involved and get their input matters. I mean, and so that's what this job is about. It's really about taking all that from what we get from the community and then making decisions about it and then disseminating that information out to people so they know what's going on, what their local government is doing. You know, I was speaking to a third grade class at Matanaga a little while ago and we were talking about local government. That's one of their topics that they're taking up this semester. And one of the kids at the end said, okay, so let me understand this right. You do more than the president does that affects my life. I said, exactly. And I walked away from that thinking job accomplished. They got it. My hope is, and I know that you get it, and so hopefully other constituents will get it as well through your dissemination of the same kind of information. Guys, thank you very much. It's been a wild, great ride and good luck. Happy Thanksgiving. Please make sure that you, if you get a chance, that you do something for someone. We'll be at the Fillmore giving thanks on Thanksgiving, so make sure that whatever it is that you do, even if you just give a bottle of water to somebody on the side of the street, make sure you give thanks this Thanksgiving holidays. Thanks so much, guys.